Okay, we want to welcome all of you to this forum tonight, School Board Candidate Forum. We have quite a few more than there were at last week's City Council Forum. And I think that's a good thing. Public interest in schools is important. Is that a candidate speaking down there? Okay. Thanks to all of you candidates for being here tonight. It takes courage, I'll try to get through this without reading it too much. Takes courage to put yourself forward for approval from your neighbors and your school district. Rotary wants to thank you for your willingness to be here tonight. We have chairs and nameplates up here for the candidates. I'll ask each candidate to introduce himself or herself with some brief biographical remarks, and then we'll get right into your questions. If you have a question for any or all of the candidates, please write it on an index card, Jackie has those back there, and hand it to her. If you don't designate a specific candidate or candidates to answer your question, I'll assume it's meant for everybody. I'll try to get to as many questions as possible. We've got a passel of them up here. If some are duplicates of the same request, I'll pick one of them, or maybe figure out how to combine them to capture what the basic meaning of the question is. I think we're gonna go till 8:30, since we have all the candidates here. About 8:15 or a little after, I'll ask each candidate to make a final statement about their candidacy. We'll open with brief biographical statements. The restrooms are right around the corner, back there. Just a gentle plea, the folks sitting next to you aren't here tonight to hear your opinions. They're here to hear the opinions of the candidates that are up here. Please, no interruptions or demonstrations of your approval or disapproval, so we can move along as smoothly as possible. Okay? Anybody disagree with that? Okay, thank you. Let's get started. We'll begin with the opening statements, right here, go down the row, and then on the questions, I'll start each candidate on down the row to start out, and then come back here.
Hello, I'm Katie Nelson, and I first want to say thank you to everybody for coming. It's a little intimidating seeing all of you out there, I'm not gonna lie. Public speaking is not my strong point. But I am from here in Jefferson since the last six years. My husband is originally from here. We decided to move here because we thought Jefferson was small enough that you still have that small-town feeling, but yet you have a big enough feel that you can get your day-to-day stuff here. I chose to run for school board because I have two kids in the school system. I think that we do have a great school system here. Don't get me wrong, every school system has its issues. Everything has some sort of change that needs to happen. With that, I am the Director of Outpatient Services at the hospital here in town. I've been a nurse for 13 years. Lots of different aspects of nursing have been able to shape kind of how I handle my life and how I think I can be a benefit to the school board here.
Hello, I'm Spencer Kirk. I am 26-years-old. I decided to run for school board because I felt like choices are a good thing. When I first heard who was, there was only three candidates running, and I felt like, you know what, that's, I mean, there's three spots open, that's not enough to, you know, give anybody a choice, so I decided to run. I'm a Green County graduate, I live in Grand Junction. I'm a parts manager up in Fort Dodge at a power sports dealership. I've been on the Grand Junction Volunteer Fire Department for seven years now, last September, actually. And I'm just here to give back and help the community.
I'm Megan Holtz, and I live on our family farm south of Grand Junction with my husband and I, three kids, two of which attend this school, this very school we're in. One is back there, and he's not quite ready to go to school yet. I'm originally from Algonah, Iowa, where I went, attended the public high school, the public schools in Algonah, and I had a great experience. It's a very similar-sized community to Jefferson, to Green County, and I really appreciated the small school and the aspects of getting to do all the activities from sports to band to quiz bowl. I went to Creighton University where I earned my accounting degree. I also obtained my CPA license in Nebraska. And in Iowa, I have been an external auditor and an internal auditor. I worked in corporate America for about 15 years. I last left a large bank where I was managing a team of nearly 15 auditors that were working on some of the most complex issues at the bank. I transitioned to self-employment, where now I do keep the books for our family farm and our business, Iowa Cover Crop, which is located here in Jefferson. I've been an active volunteer here in the community, serving as a Clover Kids leader, church treasurer, and I'm a part of the Green County Community Foundation Board.
Hi, I'm Scott Graham. I'm originally from Des Moines, Iowa. My mom was a special ed schoolteacher. For quite a while, she retired as a schoolteacher. My dad was a small-business owner, he repaired shoes in Des Moines. I grew up in Des Moines, I went to school in the Des Moines Public School Systems. Basically, from there, I ended up graduating from Iowa State in 2005. I met my wife and got married in 2006, moved to Jefferson in 2009, and we have four kids. We lived here for 16 years professionally. I am an IT professional, software engineer. Currently, I have my own business where I do ETL development. Also on the side, I am a career coach. I love helping people figure out the best career path for them, to help people along their road so they can have a similar success that I did. I am running for school board, so I can help not just myself, and not the people that I help, and not just my kids, but everybody's kids here.
Hi, guys, Jeremiah Goffner. Local Lifetime resident here at Green County, local farmer, live on the family farm. It's where I grew up, where I still am. I'm on the school board because, or I'm running for school board because I just have a passion for the school. Always have, always will. My grandmother Grace was a teacher, she taught here. Everybody loved her. My mom was an associate in Scranton, 13-years, everybody loved her. My wife's a parent educator, everybody loves her. I love the kids, I love the workers, I have a passion for it. I know we can do better, and that's why I'm here, so.
I'm Cindy Dabendick, I'm originally from Winona, Minnesota. I went to high school at actually a private school, which is probably different than what most people would think, now that I'm on the school board here in a public school. I totally believe in public schools and what they have to offer, and that they're offered to all. Everyone's welcome, we serve everyone, and I believe in that passion. I, growing up, was dyslexic, so I've always had a difficult time learning. With that, I've learned if you have the right tools and the right things in place, you are able to learn and you can succeed, even when people think you can't. So, I'm proud of that. I went on to school at Luther College where I met my husband in Decora for nursing, and I got my bachelor's there. I've worked as a nurse out in Colorado, and then here back at Green County Medical Center. I currently am working at the Iowa Central Community College at the Career Center in our healthcare strand. I have four beautiful children, one of them who's here tonight, and they are in the elementary, one in the middle school, or two in the elementary, one in middle school and one in high school. And I've been here for the last 16-years in Jefferson, and this is what I call home, so thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Hi, these microphones sound funny, I can't hear myself in them, so I hope that you guys can hear it. I am excited to be here, and I'm thankful that you guys all came to listen to us. I see some familiar faces and a lot of faces I don't know, so I would love to meet you later if that was an opportunity we could have. Again, my name is Nicole Chisholm. I am a, I've been a part-time resident in Jefferson for 17-years. My husband's a crop duster, works for Stott Aerial, and so we would come up every summer from mid-June to mid-August, beginning of September, and live here for the summer, pay our taxes, support our local businesses, love and learn in Jefferson. The first place we went was the library. I'm a huge advocate of reading and all things education. So Ms. Jane was our first friend here in Jefferson, Iowa, at the library, and that was an awesome experience ever since we've been going there. So it's wonderful to look back at my old library card from, I don't know if it was 2009 or whatever, do the math. Let's see, more about me, I have three kids, 21, 18, so two of them are in college, one of them is still in school, she's an eighth grader, attends, we homeschool, which I would love to explain what that means, because it doesn't mean we sit at home and do school all day. And then she goes to a program in Grimes called Classical Conversations, so that's what we do part-time. And then she's dual-enrolled here at the school with hopes of maybe going full-time here. We just moved in May, full-time, so we're now full-time residents here in Jefferson, Iowa, getting cozy and moved in, unpacking things, and kind of getting adjusted to what life in the north or Midwest looks like. We're originally from Texas. I've been married for 23, almost, years. Oh, my education, I am a nurse practitioner, so you have a lot, if anything happens tonight, you guys are fully covered. We've got a lot of healthcare up here. I've been a nurse, a nurse practitioner for 20-years this year in May, so a lot of experience there. I bring a lot of that passion for health with me, as hopefully sitting on the school board. What else? I think that's it. I'll tell you more at the end about why you should vote for me.
Okay, thank you. We'll start out with a general question. What are the school district's greatest strengths, and what are its most pressing challenges?
I'd say our greatest strengths is our, I think the college classes that they offer as in high school. When I was in high school, I took the construction class, we built a house every year, so my junior year and my senior year, we built a house. It was really neat. One of the things that I feel like we have strong is that we have that college option while you're still in high school. Pressing issues, though, I know there are some, I think we are letting down in our educational fields on some aspect. I know we do have an issue with busing, I've heard a lot about that. Before I even decided to run, I was hearing, you know, people thinking, hey, our kid's gotta get to school, there's no safe route to get to school. And that's, those are the two things there that I'd really say is our pressing issues.
So, I think the strengths of the school starts with the people. We have great staff and teachers that help our children every day. As a parent of children in the district, I've had an opportunity to see this firsthand. I think we have great staff. But along with that goes a concern for me is retaining those teachers and our staff, because, you know, adequate funding for their salaries, giving them, you know, the right tools. Other strengths we have, like Spencer, I agree, the Career Center is a great asset. We need to have, but at the same time, this goes back to staffing, we don't have the staff to make that the program that we really wanted that to be. So, my other concerns really revolve around effectively operating the school in the face of rising costs. You know, as many of you know, your insurance bills are going up, the school's insurance bills are going up, so just how we factor in the rising cost of everything while operating a school district and keeping those teachers compensated. Finally, like Spencer, I agree, we should continue to strive to improve our school performance in the latest Iowa, I'm gonna, I don't remember what they're called, the rankings, I'm sure we've all saw the news that our schools, the ratings for our schools were not as high as we would want them to be probably. So I don't think that's like a quick fix or a one-time thing, you're always gonna be constantly striving to improve something year over year, and it's just making a goal and working on it with a lot of intention. So those are, I would think we would always want to strive towards excellence in those areas.
I'll tell you what, I believe that communication, especially with my kids, is extremely important. I want to hear their stories, I want to hear what happened in their day, and having, my two oldest are boys, and I'll tell you what, they really, over time, especially in those mid-teens, did not want to talk to me. And I'm sure none of you can relate to that. But I'll tell you, the strength that I hear are from the stories from my, from my kids who have been at school. When they come home and they talk about school, they talk about the teachers. They talk about the teachers that make it worthwhile, that were, that they've learned a lot of information from, and those are the people that inspire them to do more. And I find it amazing, I didn't actually expect that, that the stories my boys tell is about the teachers that they have. As far as opportunities, the things I'd like to see is being a career coach, being in that direction, is I still hear a lot of people, and I know we can't fix this forever, but I hear a lot of people talk, a lot of kids, high schoolers say, I don't know. What are you gonna do after high school? I don't know. And I was an I-don't-know child, so I understand. But I feel like that we need to work harder on make sure that career planning is set up, and that, good or bad, they have a plan.
Yeah, like they said, we have some amazing staff, we really do. I know my kids, they, they get attached to certain teachers and they just, even when they've moved up a grade, they still see them, they love them. We have, we have amazing staff. That being said, we need, we need to support that staff. There's a lot of behaviors that are going on in the schools, and the behavior issues are causing learning problems, and that is what I feel like that we need to really, really crack down on and address. Because there's kids that are, they're doing just fine, they're meeting the benchmark, but they're getting left behind because they're not getting taught, because people are causing problems or disrupting class. And I feel like that's reflecting where the school is at on a grade level, you know. If we can, if we can correct some of the behavior issues, how we do that, I'm not exactly sure, I have ideas on it, but we gotta get the behaviors under control and back the staff, and get these things under control. That's my thought.
Yes, it's like everyone said, as far as staffing, we really do have fabulous staff, and that is probably our biggest asset, as far as education, obviously. Some of the concerns is gonna be, for me, enrollment, making sure we have a steady enrollment, making sure our community's thriving, to make sure that that stays. I'm not saying that we have to grow exponentially, but I just want to keep that constant steady, because that is where your budget stays and maintains itself. Busing, yes, continues to be a concern. They were able to figure out some additional routes, but yes, there should be hopefully more bus drivers, and we can continue to look into that. And then reading proficiency. Being dyslexic myself, I, every child, I think, needs to learn how to read and be able to do that. So, those scores for me, seeing those, are a little disheartening, especially when we have the right staff, I feel. So it's trying to reevaluate, why are these tools not working, what are we doing? And yes, we're, and I say we, because I'm currently on the school board, at a high level, we oversee, we're, when you look at the school board, we're like at the dance floor, looking down. And so it's trying to be assisting in the best way you can without getting into the day-to-day operation, because that's not necessarily the school board's job.
Would you repeat that question fully for me, please?
The one about strengths and weaknesses?
Okay. I thought the second part was different. Okay, strengths for me are the size. I come from Texas, those were mega-scholes. We had thousands of kids graduating in a senior class. So to come here to Jefferson where the graduating class is a hundred-some, that's like a private school in Texas, that's awesome. So I would definitely say that's one of the strengths. Close community, man, everybody here knows everybody, friends with everybody. I love that aspect. I came from a big Dallas-Fort Worth area, grew up in there, I didn't know my neighbor, I didn't see him at, we don't have Hy-Vee's down there, but I didn't see him at the grocery store. So the community aspect is wonderful for accountability with your kiddos, with your friends, with, you know, whoever, so I think those are awesome strengths. Teachers, we've come across several teachers, administration, as we've been in the enrollment process, as we've been playing sports, and I have not had one person be ill-willed or ugly. I think we have some of the best teachers here that I know of. I can't say I went to school here, I can't say, my kids have gone to school here for a long time, but from the experiences that I've had now, amazing people with great hearts. So that's awesome. Weaknesses, everybody's already mentioned it, academics. I'm a, I'm a huge fan of academic excellence, so when I see a grade C, that won't cut it for me. I would like to see at least a B, so I would say we really gotta get our grades up. And respect, respect is a huge thing for me. It's on the Green County school website, they're already working on that, so it's not something that we haven't already probably verbalized and noticed. But I think within the school system, the kids gotta respect the teachers, the teachers gotta respect the kids, there has to be a general culture of caring and respect for one another. How are you? How was your day? I'm sure that probably happens with majority of the kids and teacher relationships, but I would like to see that continue. So I think those would probably be my strengths and weaknesses that I've observed.
Just like everybody else has said, our teachers are great. My kids both go to the elementary school, well, now she's in middle school. So I have one in elementary and one in middle school, and we have had so many great teachers. I can see some of you here, some of you who have looked at my daughter and said, yeah, she talks a lot, but let's use that to her advantage and teach her how to use that. I've seen my teachers here who, my son, he struggles and he needs extra help, but they worked hard, and now he doesn't need Title I reading. That's your teachers, those are the people that care about your kids. I could go on and on, and you can probably hear my voice crack, because I can literally look at a teacher that has done that for my kids. The concerns that I have are obviously financial concerns, because it's, it's state-funded, it comes from enrollment. If we don't keep enrollment up, but still keeping that sweet spot of having the small school, that's where it gets a little bit scary. And then also, obviously, another concern, like everybody else has said, the ratings came out and our education scores were not great. So why is it not great if we have great people? What are we not doing that's not quite right? What are we not giving to our teachers to be able to give to our students? I think talking with schools that are similar size, but maybe doing better on some of those ratings are how you start to figure that out. What are they doing different, so we can make sure all of our teachers have what they need for our kids?
I've got quite a few questions about homeschooling. Let's just continue on with that and get that off the table. Why do you think a number of families homeschool? Do you have children in this district? If not, why not? If you haven't already said that.
I'm starting, right, Rick? Okay. So I've said my children attend this public school, so I don't have, I do not homeschool. If I'm gonna speculate why people homeschool, there's a variety of reasons someone might homeschool, and I don't want to speak for anyone that does. I think that's an exercise of parental rights, which I know is, several candidates up here are big on parental rights, and they are exercising their parental rights to homeschool their children. I think that's a great option for people. It's not for me, I love to work, I love my job, I love fulfilling my job, like, I love being a CPA, I love contributing to my business, and I love that people love to be teachers and teach my kids. So, yeah, that's, I'd just be speculating, so I don't want to speculate anymore, but I'll pass the mic to Scott.
Yeah, so I have four kids, one just graduated last year from Green County, I have another one graduating this year. I do have two girls that are currently homeschooled, so they, they left the Green County school system three years ago, and so it has actually been an interesting experience, and a few of those experiences I did not actually expect. So, partially, why are they in homeschool? Primarily because they were, frankly, they were coming home complaining that they always had headaches at school, they complained that it was constantly loud in the classrooms, they complained, they were struggling to basically be mentally healthy when they were at school. And so I had to make a decision, do I want to fear the impact that's gonna happen? Do I want to be concerned about the consequences of not taking them out? Do I want to just simply leave it up to hope that everything's gonna work out? Or do I want to be proactive and decide to make a choice? And so that's what I did and my wife did, we decided to make a choice, and we took them out of public school, and they've been homeschooling. Actually, one of the most interesting things that I've discovered is when kids, when my kids and the kids that they experienced who are also homeschooled, when they are together, it is the most beautiful experience. The kids, there's no tribal, there's no tribalism, there's no hatred, they play happily, all kids from high school all the way down to kids in diapers. And I'll tell you what, that's been an amazing experience, and I'm happy to have experienced it, and I think it's hard to fathom if you're not in that situation. Anyway, yeah, so hopefully that answers the question.
Will you repeat the question one more time? It's kind of a general question about, about homeschooling. Do you homeschool your kids? If so, why? Just general homeschooling opinion question.
Okay. No, we, I do not homeschool. I think it was if our kids go here too, right? Yeah, so, no. Our, I have three children, one in high school, one in middle school, one in elementary school. They have gone to Green County all the way up until this year. We started out the year here, and then we ended up pulling our kids, and we go to Coon Rapids now. A lot of people ask why. It's all about education. Coon Rapids is kind of setting a bar quite a bit higher than Green County right now, and our kids were feeling they were getting left behind. It's not out of the way for me. Where I live over there, it's a three-mile drive difference. So, we, we go there, my wife is employed there, she works there, and it was kind of a safety reason too for our youngest child, he has a lifelong blood disorder. If he gets hurt, he needs to be seen immediately, it's a, it's a fast response, we need to have him as close to parent at all times that we can. Me being farming, trucking, working, I'm not that parent, mama is that parent, so he needs to be closest to her at all times. And so, originally, we were just gonna take him, and then my oldest actually begged to go there. And so we pulled our kids down there. They're happy, and they're kind of in shock that the behaviors are not there like they are here. And the behavior issues, if we can get the behavior issues under control, I'm sure my kids would love to come back, but right now, that's, we put them down there because of behavior issues and education. Coon Rapids is in the top third in the state. Green County has not. So we need to raise that bar for all the kids, so, thank you.
Like I said earlier, my kids are all in the schools here. As far as homeschool goes, yes, it's a parent's choice. I think it's important for the school board in general to know why people are homeschooling, because maybe they have a valid reason, maybe they're concerned about behaviors, whatever it might be, it's important that we know why and support whatever decision that might be. And also then be a school that will also support that homeschool journey. We do have a relationship with all homeschooled children now, and just fostering that to make sure that continues. To me, yes, I think for the most part, our public schools is where children need to learn, but there are some exceptions, and we just need to be aware of those.
As I mentioned earlier, yes, we homeschool, and I'm so excited to tell you guys about it, because it's one, it's a wonderful opportunity to, if you have the guts and the fortitude, because not everybody can do it. I mean, you're with your kids all day, every day, you're teaching them, you're hiring tutors, you're taking them to co-ops, you are actively involved in the education of your kids, and that responsibility falls on you, not on anybody else. So it's a heavy weight to carry, but it's an exciting journey. I taught my kids to read, I taught my kids to write, I taught my kids to do math. My kids are thriving, and so it's wonderful to look at my two college-educated kids and see how they're blossoming, and see that they had a strong and see how they're blossoming and see that they had a strong foundation. So why do we homeschool? Academic excellence is one of them. I told you guys, we came from Texas. I told you the schools were enormous. Kids are numbers down there. It's not sweet like it is here. So you have to keep that in mind. So academic excellence was important to me. If I saw that my kids had any kind of hesitancy towards reading or towards math or towards anything, I was not going to let them get behind. So I had the ability, we had the means to go ahead and teach them. And I have a teacher's heart and a passion for that. So I felt equipped to do it. Flexibility. I mentioned my husband's a crop duster. So his schedule is different than most people. So we came up to Iowa. We went back to Texas. We had to have some flexibility in our lives. Being able to stick your kids in their curriculum in the back of your car and head up to Iowa for the summer or elongated summers was so wonderful. So my kids got to see that with my husband. They got to see the flexibility and that not everything in life has to fit inside a certain box. We can do different things. So I think that's an excellent experience for them. Closeness with the family, that was the other thing I wrote down. Because we want to focus on the, what do they call it? The nuclear family. Mom, dad, kids, sitting around a table, talking, communicating. Somebody mentioned that. Just the ability to be close with your kids, to know them, to hear them, to see what they want to do, to help. As a parent, we're called to help bring out who they are and the gifts and talents they have. So if I was away from my kids, I didn't feel like I could do that. So we have the ability just to be with them. That doesn't mean I'm against. They went to private school for five years. And now we're here in Jefferson and it's so wonderful. It's like a free private school. You guys have it good here. So I'm really excited about what the future holds for her in education. But that's why we homeschool. So if anybody has any questions, I would love to tell you more about it.
As I said earlier, my kids go to Green County in the elementary and the middle school. I can't speculate why people decide to homeschool. I think that, just like everybody else has said, it's a parental choice. You guys all have a decision to make what's best for your family. What's best for my kids is to come to public school and to be able to be around their peers, to learn how to work with others, to figure out how to handle those hard situations when your classmate's not your best friend, but you got to get, figure it out and work with them. I also agree with Megan. I really enjoy my job. I have a passion for caring for people as a nurse. I have my master's in nursing. I went to school and I want to be able to use that because I think that's what I can give back to our community is my passion for nursing. And that's why I let the teachers give their passion for teaching our kids.
So I don't have any kids that go to the schools. I don't have any kids at all, actually. I got a couple of dogs, but they don't allow them in the school yet. If they did, it'd make life a little easier too. But now for homeschooling, I mean, like a lot said, there's a lot of parental choice that is involved in that. I did know, I knew, I know a couple of kids that they were homeschooled due to their father traveled for work and they all traveled with them. So they did get extra perks. I mean, they got to go, you know, down to Texas. They had to go to Florida following the job. But, you know, they got to see a lot more. But, I mean, again, it is a parental choice. And we can't tell you how to raise your kids. Like, you shouldn't tell me how to raise my dogs or anything like that. I mean, that's just the way it is.
Does that run through all of you? Good? Okay. The Peyton Scherdan sharing agreement will soon need to be renewed. What's your opinion of the current agreement? And do you think sharing with another district is a distraction?
Well, I think, I would say, first of all, if you were to ask the same question to the people of Peyton Scherdan, it would certainly be quite a bit different. Personally, to me, I respect that people in Peyton Scherdan, they want to be separate. They want to be their own thing. But ultimately, the way things are, populations are kind of dwindling, it's more likely than not that eventually, Green County will be, everybody will be here in, you know, in our schools here. So to me, I think it's a great opportunity for us to work together with Peyton Scherdan, but at the same time, understand that we're going to have to integrate everybody from the Peyton Scherdan School District.
I like that we share with Peyton Scherdan. I mean, Peyton Scherdan has their, they got their own thing going on up there. It's great. It was that way back when we were in school. PC kids came down. They played sports. They did some other stuff. If we can share our facilities to help the kids here in Green County, why not? That's my, that's my opinion on that. I don't know what the actual current agreement is, but whatever gets renewed, yeah, if it betters the kids up there to learn and do stuff down here with us, I'm all for it.
I would have to agree as far as our relationship with PC. It's great to have them integrate with us on different subjects. I think sometimes it has been a little bit hindersome and where that area of concern is more with scheduling. Depending upon when they're coming down, they get bused down in the morning and then that can kind of screw up our high school schedules. So we always have to be cognizant of, yes, we need to make sure our school's running properly first before we can help others. But obviously, we want to be that partner and work with each other. And if someday we do integrate, then we want to be, have that relationship formed. And if it doesn't happen, that's just fine too. I mean, it's great what they have going on up there and it works well for the children that are there as well.
I don't know all the ins and outs to the agreement, as somebody mentioned earlier, but I love Peyton Scherdan. I think it's an awesome place for kids to have smaller classes and more focused education. So if there's an opportunity to keep it going, I would definitely say, keep it going. Some kids just need that. They need a little less stimulation. They need a little less, a little more teacher concentration. So the fact that people can go there, I think, is a wonderful blessing to this community. So I think it's a wonderful thing.
Also, not knowing the specifics of that contract, I don't want to speak completely to it because I don't know. What I would say is that when it comes time for that, it would be a decision that the board would need to make sure that at the end of the day, what's best for the students is what's done. Everybody said there are some people who may thrive better in that smaller setting. I went to a smaller school, so I can see the perks of that. And then I also look at some of the different opportunities that we might be able to offer them with the bigger school. So I think at the end of the day, you just have to look at what's best for those students. And I know sometimes it gets to be a little bit hairy when you've got schools that could possibly be closing or not. And what's best for the students is what I would support.
Also not knowing really what the stipulations are between the two schools and how that was all set up. I do believe it is a good thing though because those students are getting to use some of the things that we offer down here that they don't offer up there, where shop classes. And when I was in high school, I think the shop classes were a lot bigger. Not sure that it's the same way. I mean, we had a construction program that built houses. I don't think they build houses anymore. And that's probably more of a funding issue and all that. But there was, I mean, a lot of good things come from it. And again, it is what's best for those students. I mean, we shouldn't be looking at it. I mean, yes, we need to make sure our students are taken care of and that they're not being disrupted by these other kids coming into class late due to a busing issue though.
Seems like a lot of us need to investigate the sharing agreement, which that is something if I was elected, I would be doing. So like I said, I'm pretty ignorant on what that current sharing agreement says, what the pros and cons are currently. But if elected, I'm a kind of person who will take the time to understand what's there, how the current agreement works, and then look to make sure that any future agreement addresses any potential problems we've had in the past with it. So that's the kind of person you would get with me. I'm a learner, so I love to dive in and learn new things. So I'm not worried that I don't know what's in there now because I would dive in and learn what's in there as part of my job.
Quite a few questions on teacher retention, supporting teachers, finding out why they leave both the profession and the local district. In a time when teachers are keeping, are leaving the profession in droves and public opinion vilifies teachers, what will you do to support our teachers? Have you considered exit interviews with someone other than administrators to determine why teachers are leaving?
So yeah, that's a good question. I do think that those, when they are leaving, I think that that conversation needs to be recorded so that the board can hear that conversation fully of what they said to the T. Not, well, this is what she said and take it out of context. I don't know why teachers are leaving so much except for, I hate to, I hate to like say it as like a clique, but if you, if you're an outcast teacher, if you're not in the clique, if you're not in the group of friends of teachers, there's always that one person that's left out. It might be new. It might be someone's view different. And sometimes teachers are just forced out by other teachers. And you either fit in or you don't fit in. And it shouldn't be that way. But we need to know about these situations. And the same with, with the teachers. If the principal is not backing the teacher and not giving the teachers what they need to do their job, their hands are tied and what are, what are they supposed to do? Except for leave and go somewhere else. We have to support the teachers. We have to support staff. We have to make sure that the higher-ups, the principals, the board, superintendent, everybody is backing the teachers and finding out what they need and what the problem is. Whether it is behavior issues in the classroom or it is a, just an issue with the classroom itself or the curriculum or whatever it is, we need to be knowing what these things are and what we can do to address the situation.
As currently being on our board, every meeting, we have our hiring and resignation. And I always look at that and I take it, take it to heart and go back and, or admin, specifically Abbott's, hey, what's going on here? Why is this person leaving? If there's a question about it, I kind of will ask deeper and say, what else have we done? I totally believe in exit interviews. I think that that is something that should happen with all people, whether we need to change on who does it. That could always be looked at. I think also supporting the teachers as far as, like we talked about behaviors, sometimes that might be the issue that they're having an issue with. And then I know right now especially, we've really looked at the new teachers coming in. We look at our long-term teachers, but also the new teachers. And currently, we're really trying to strive to give them additional support so that they can feel comfortable and get their feet wet. And so, yes, as far as teacher retention, we need to keep working on it and do our best at it. So.
So yes, as far as teacher retention, I, the things that I wrote down just that came to my mind first was our culture. Creating a culture that people enjoy to be in. So as any worker, there's something called burnout and you experience it a lot in the healthcare field. You experience it, I'm sure, as a teacher. So what, how do we counteract burnout? Well, create an environment where people enjoy being there and enjoy being around one another. The kids like the teachers, the teachers like the kids. So I think that's a huge culture thing that we have to keep working on. Not to say that it's bad here because I really go back and say, you guys don't know what you got here. You know, it's comparatively speaking, this is an awesome place. So, but yeah, keep working on that. Create enjoyment, that's what I said. Exit, yes, exit interviews should be done on everybody. We need to know the why behind why you chose to leave on, was it money? Was it an encounter you had with another teacher or student? Yeah, that's super enlightening. So absolutely, I love that. That's just another one of those things that, like Megan was saying, you dive in deeper, you ask more questions, you find out the problem so you can fix it. And then as far as teacher retention, oh, coming up with great ideas for teachers that make them want to come here. So Texas was having the same kind of dilemma. Teacher, it's just hard to get teachers because for whatever reason, teaching isn't the cool thing that it used to be. I have a feeling that, like Jeremiah's kind of talked about, it might have to do with some of the attitudes and behaviors and the disrespect. But man, teachers are the coolest people on the planet. They make the biggest impression with our kids. Everybody probably has a teacher story that they can look back in their life and they can say, this teacher, I know I do. When I was in fourth grade, public school, I had a teacher, Ms. Lang. Remember her name? Changed my life, right? So teachers are super, super valuable. So retaining them is super important. And I think a board that works well together can come up with some really great ideas to keep, keep that going. And I can bring some Texas ideas too.
So teaching is hard. You're talking about one teacher in the classroom with 20 kids who come from different home lives, different backgrounds, and they're coming with different amounts of knowledge. I can't imagine sitting there trying to figure out how to teach this group of people, these, all of these people. I have two kids at home that come from the same house. One, he struggles a lot in school and needs the extra resources. My other one, she excels at things and needs challenged at all times. So there you're talking about two kids that come from the same household, the same parents, and they are totally different. So teaching is hard. I don't, I can't imagine trying to do it. So that's why I'm sure there's probably issues with retention and people wanting to leave. Also, exit interviews are great. I think that they are important for anybody, but why not catch it before the exit interview? Why not be able to be an open book? Have those teachers, they know they can come to you as a school board member and talk to you and tell you what's going on, what's going wrong, what's going well. If we can catch them before the exit interview, that's a great way that we can try and retain those teachers.
Yeah, and all that, everyone, I agree with a lot what they're saying. But my thing is, is I've quit jobs. And I'm going to tell you, I mean, I've quit quite a few. Quitting's the easy part. It's what's after that's difficult, what you're going to do next. I've quit jobs without even having a game plan next. And I did two years doing my own thing. Now, I've never quit a job because I had to work with someone I didn't like. I never quit a job because of customer service and the people were treating me bad. So I've quit a job, it starts at the top. Somebody isn't helping you. You're not getting the, what you need. Someone's not listening. And that's where we need to change. Because that's the thing is, is like Katie said here, is you need to start asking before they want to quit. Because they're coming. Somebody is being told something and it's just not going anywhere. So we got to start with, you know, what can we do to get that information to us? Because it isn't obviously getting if they're leaving. And everybody, they're saying something to somebody.
So I, I was writing notes and I would definitely, that was the first thing I wrote, Katie, was teaching is incredibly difficult. I sit here as someone, you know, I, I see, I see very similar things that Katie mentioned. In addition, I just want to acknowledge that like our state government, I don't think has made teaching any easier recently. So there's lots of layers of new rules and new laws that are making the profession even more challenging. And I also want to acknowledge that funding to pay these teachers has not kept up in the past 15-plus years. If you look at the starting wage for a teacher, yes, our legislators increased it this year, but it's been behind forever. They make next to nothing. You wonder why kids don't want to be teachers anymore? Because they can go out and be a YouTube star and make way more money right away. It has something to do with that. Let's be real about that. So like, it is, it is very difficult. Our district has nearly half of our children on free and reduced lunch. And those kids are not only bringing potentially hunger, they're bringing mental health, potential mental health issues to school. And teachers are expected to care for every part of that child. I'm also getting emotional about this. So you have to acknowledge that it's not just teaching, you know, from eight to three. It's not just teaching eight to three. It's not getting a break over a summer. It's caring about those kids all year round. So we have to make sure they are adequately funded. And I agree, we need to investigate the root cause for all these, for departures. I'm an auditor. And root cause is something we go after all the time. You ask why, and then you ask why again, and then you ask why again, until you finally get to the real root cause. And is that something we can control? If we can, we should fix it. If we can't, if it's with our state legislators, we need to advocate to fix it.
Yeah, I think it's kind of interesting. My mom was a special ed teacher. And so I heard a lot of stories when she would come home and talking about her experience as a teacher. And oftentimes, it was, a lot of her stories were sometimes in frustration. She went through the age where she had a lot of autonomy when she was a teacher. And she went from having a lot of autonomy to by the end of her career, basically having none. And it was very, it was quite a struggle for her. And she talked a lot about that and just how the role of the teacher had changed over her career. And actually, because of that, I was one of those people that decided I didn't want to be a teacher. I didn't want to have to go through the same experiences that she went through. And so I think about these things all the time. And then when I add it into my current lifestyle where, you know, I talk to a lot of people, And then when I add it into my current lifestyle, where, you know, I talk to a lot of people, I talk to, I help people find careers and try to make good decisions, and ultimately, it always comes down to the same thing, where people just don't feel respected at work, they don't feel like it's a good fit for them, for, or, you know, sometimes it's money. Money certainly plays a role. But if you are in a position where where you don't have a lot of autonomy, you don't feel like there's a lot of respect going your way, you decide to move on. And that's what everybody does in every industry, whenever you're in a role like that. And and it's not necessarily anything that that the school, their current school board or anybody here currently is forcing on these teachers. It's just a matter of reality that people are struggling, and in our current setup with way teachers are expected to teach, expected to handle all the students, expected to to manage, but not have the autonomy, they're simply going to find something else to do.
Are we through? Okay. It's hard for me to keep the players straight without a program. At the last forum, Megan Holtz said she's not political. However, she, Cindy, and Katie's signs are set together on Democratic known homes and seen passed around by Democrats. Are you three supported by the Democratic Party of Green County?
Since my name wasn't in that question, that makes me feel really special. The really easy answer is no. So I, somebody's really been digging through records. I don't know many people's party affiliation. I don't even know my own party affiliation, if I'm being honest. I switch a lot to vote in primaries. So the simple answer is no. Did we make our signs cohesive? Yeah, well, I mean, they're red, red and black and white. I think the same could be asked of our, some of our opponents that are also part of a PAC that has signs that are the same colors and the same theme, and they are pictured together. So I, if the short answer is no, we are not supported by the Democratic Party. This is a nonpartisan election.
100%, and I'll echo that as far as sign placement. I know I have them also in Republicans' yards, so I don't know where that came from.
I would agree with Megan and Cindy. No, we are not supported by any party. That was one reason why I personally also chose to do Ram Colors, because this has nothing to do with politics. This is about our school and our kids. I don't really care what affiliation you have when it comes to politics. And I agree with Megan, half the time I don't know what I am, because I vote for who I believe in when they're talking about what they want to do for us, how they're going to make changes, and I really don't enjoy politics at all.
Okay, here's one on the other side. The chair of the Green County Republican Party helped to organize the last forum. Apparently, those, the three candidates in that forum are supported by an organization, call it a PAC or not a PAC. What's the agenda of that organization?
Yeah, absolutely.
It also, just a second. I say just a second, I've got more. There's another question that came up with it. What is the agenda of that PAC? And why are there similar templates in other towns with exactly the same kinds of billboards?
Yeah, so the Jefferson Citizens for Common Sense is the organization that that decided that they were going to put up some dollars to purchase some signs for us and put up some some billboards. As far as agenda, they have never provided any sort of suggestion as to what we should believe, what we should say, whether we should attend this event. They have never once ever said anything in that regard. The only thing they have provided is they said, hey, how about we help you guys put out some signs, and we'll purchase these for you and get it, and then we'll get it taken care of. So for the most part, they really just kind of support us in that way. And we are kind of a group. I know personally, for me, again, I am like the others, I flip around of what political party I'm affiliated with. I don't even know if this group is Republican, Democrat, I don't know what they are. I can make assumptions, but but for for me, I'm more interested in in being a common sense candidate. And they recruited me to run for school board, so I said, sure, why not? I'll go ahead and do that. So again, even though they, the reason they're all the same is because the same designer put together the design. So so ultimately, and logically, that's why they all look the same.
Yeah, this is, this is not political. It should not be political. It is not political. This is common sense, the group that is doing all this. Yeah, when they found out that I threw my hat in and I wanted to run for school board, they said, we can help you, we can get signs. I had no idea there was going to be a giant picture of my face in town. That shocked me when I drove through town. But I'm okay with it, it doesn't matter. At the end of the day, it's what you guys want. If you want me on the board, great. If you don't want me on the school board, that's okay, too. I'm just here to try to help serve the kids, the community, just do my part. Thank you.
Yes, I get to comment, too. So since I'm relatively new to the community, I thought it was a wonderful gesture of kindness that people would get behind me and support me in my desire to serve our community. So as far as political affiliation, they've never mentioned a word about, they've never said the R-word or the D-word. So I honestly don't know, but common sense is the theme that they promote, they want common sense with within our community. And I think that's totally legitimate, common sense with finances, with the choices that we make for our school, with the choices that we make for our city. So I, I don't know, I think they're great, and they they were very kind to me, and they supported me when I was new, so I think that's wonderful. So I thank you guys.
Okay, thank you. Who's starting the next round? Okay, Cindy.
I think it should be Cindy, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Do you believe in merit-based teacher pay based on student performance? What does the latest research say?
I don't know that I know the exact research of what it says. As far as merit pay, I don't, I don't necessarily, my first instinct is no, I don't necessarily agree with that, because you don't know what child is going to walk in or not, and how much they're going to struggle and how much needs they may or may not have. And you might have a classroom that needs more than the next teacher does. So how is that necessarily, you just don't know. So I kind of have a struggle with that. I would be willing to discuss it more, learn more, if people are passionate about that, but at this moment, I don't feel that that would be strong for me.
Can you repeat that question for me, please?
Yeah, I shouldn't put these away until you guys are done. Do you believe in merit-based teacher pay based on student performance? And what does the latest research show?
Okay, so my gut instinct when I first heard that question was absolutely not. And then as far as research, I don't know what the research shows, but we can look into that if it's a, if it's a thing we need to. So in the healthcare field, if if I got paid based on how compliant my patients were, I would probably, I wouldn't get any bonuses, potentially. And that's not fair. That doesn't mean I'm not a good provider. It just means that people have their individual choices. Same with kiddos, same with their family units. You can't control what they do. So as far as rewarding a teacher based on what your kiddos are doing, or how they're bad they're doing, I don't think so. Now, can we have bonuses and incentives? Absolutely, those are wonderful, let's bring that on, but not necessarily merit-based. So I think I would say no to that.
Similar as the first two. I do not know the research about it either, but I would also agree that I don't necessarily think that it makes sense. You don't know who's walking into your classroom, you don't know who's going to need the extra help. And, you know, you hear from some teachers or that, not that they get the kids that struggle more, but they maybe do better with some kids that struggle more. So then, because that teacher is able to handle more difficult students, does that mean that they shouldn't get compensated the same because they are trying to help kids that are struggling more? Sorry, I'm not really saying how I want this to go. I'm struggling with this one. But at the end of the day, no, I don't agree with it, because you're talking about people and they have choices, those kids have choices when they go home, and they're all different. So to leave somebody's pay up to how somebody else performs, I don't think is correct.
Just like the rest, I do not know the research on that. Honestly, I don't even know how it would work. I mean, I'm commission-based at work, so, I mean, I understand that side of things, but in a learning aspect, I wouldn't, because there's just too many variables. First off, just, you mean, the kid's home life, I mean, if they go home, they, maybe they don't have time to study. Maybe they're too busy taking care of their siblings. There's nothing that, unless we're going to provide daycare for everyone to do that, just, I just don't feel like that would work. Free will is a crazy thing, and those kids, they can do what they want, if they want to learn, they can, if they don't want to learn, they don't have to. And then, again, the home life, they can, you don't know what it's like.
Going to be a broken record. I, I don't know any much research on merit-based teacher pay. And, you know, I personally would hate the idea of having my pay be based on outcomes that I really can't control. Now, there are, should there be goals for teachers as far as what they can control, what they can accomplish? Sure, I think that's something that can be explored, but making their pay dependent on student test scores just does not seem realistic.
Yeah, I'm going to be a bit of a broken record, too. I, my, my mom actually worked at Smouse, and she experienced a merit-based system. So she always had to believe that no matter who the child is, they had an opportunity to succeed, and they could succeed if they were taught the proper way. And I agree completely with that. And because of that, her kids at Smouse always had the top grades that they've ever had for that class. Whenever she taught, that was the situation. But because of that, they said, well, your, the merit-based is based off of the grades and how they improve. They didn't improve because they were already at the highest they'd ever been. And so for me personally, from that experience, I would definitely say no to merit-based. Though I will say, generally, in a lot of other industries, merit is a fantastic way to go. But I find it a really hard way to really push this into schools, because a lot of times, what ends up happening is that you may end up having, in her case, from her perspective, there were teachers who intentionally taught slow so that the grades would go up over time. So ultimately, end up not being, not reflecting what was really happening among the students in their learning.
All right, so what they all said, too, same thing. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think that's how it should be. I don't know what the, you know, what the statistics are on it or anything else like that. But I would hate to see teachers push towards throwing out a grade just to raise a grade, you know? I mean, that's a real thing. I mean, you look at my, you look at your kid's portal, and every once in a while, you'll have a grade that was like, they did really, really bad. The teacher can just throw that out, because it affected their grade that bad. And I would hate to have them just keep throwing grades out just to raise their rates up. I mean, I think if a teacher's doing very, very well, then that's what you bring to the table when you renew your contract the next year. Yeah, I, that's, yeah.
As the single largest taxation entity in Green County, collecting over 39% of property taxes, what would you do to reduce spending within the district?
An energy audit, first of all. Gain better insight into where we're spending money. I've studied that chart. Megan, will you hold up that chart? That is a very wonderful, complex chart about how and where our money comes from and where it goes. So I think we have to get acquainted with that and decide where has the money been spent? And how can we do a better job of it? So energy audit would be my first thing. Second thing would just be getting more acquainted with what our budget is, talking to our superintendent, finding out from our secretary about our financial status, and then investigating what, you know, where we're spending our money.
Also, I would be trying to figure out that very complex map that Megan held up. It is not a simple thing. I've been able to start to dive into it with one of the committees that I'm on with, where we're looking at our master facilities plan, and it is complicated. I think your biggest thing when it comes to trying to figure out finances and where you can come up with more money is you hope you don't have to cut things, but look at wants versus needs. What do we need to have to be able to have our school? What do the students need to be able to learn? And then what are those wants, those big wishes? And if you can have a school board and administration who's able to decipher between those two things, I think that can go a long way when it comes to finances.
I've heard a lot about taxes and people. I own property over in Junction, so I pay a lot in taxes. Not as much as probably over here Jefferson has a better value than my properties over there do, for sure. But I think it all boils down to is, yes, taxes are hard, but we're going to have to look at that type of budgeting. I'm on Grand Junction City Council, and, I mean, that is something, you have to know what's actually needed, but it is hard. You're spreading money thin here or there, and do you really want to cut this to cut that? But it is nice that a community like Jefferson, there are great sponsors here in the community. I know, and like in Grand Junction, we have great sponsors for the city that help. I know Jefferson does, too. There are many, many sponsors. We just need to try to dive in to figure out where we can get the money without deciding, hey, we should just shut this and cancel this and stop all that.
I love this part. I, I am a nerdy numbers gal, so I love to look at a financial statement, and I love to look at all the details. So I, I too, like Spencer, I, I'm an agricultural property taxpayer, like, like a lot of property taxes. So I don't like paying property tax as much to the next person, but I understand where my money's going, right? I do understand that. I'm not going to sit here and say today that I know exactly if or what needs cut. I don't know, I haven't gone through the financials with that, you know, that lens yet, because it's, it's not, it's not my job yet. I was elected, that is something I would be looking towards. I'm always looking towards being more efficient with the resources we have. And I think this school has been doing that. That's, you know, the solar project, that is intended to bring the utilities down on our, on our high school facility. You know, another, another thing I love that farmers like to talk about is the line painter for the football field, which may feel excessive to somebody out here, but it's actually saving overtime money, right? Like, we had, we had to pay an individual overtime to paint the lines on the football field, so the machine will actually end up saving money. So sometimes those projects deserve a little bit of investigation, and spending money can save money in the long term, but you've got to be forward-looking and have, have a plan and know your priorities. So I'm not going to sit here and say, yes, you should slash, slash, slash. But you should examine everything with a fine-tooth comb and see where you can find efficiencies, always.
Yeah, ultimately, I'm all about what should we spend our money on more. I want to help people make sure that they have their careers established, make sure that they can, they can learn something so that by the time they graduate high school, they have experienced something like building a house, which, when I talk to people who who were in this school district, you know, many years ago, that's what they tell me about. They tell me about how they built a house. My, my son said that they, they, in his senior year, they didn't build anything. They, they spent time doing AutoCAD instead. So to me, that, even though that's great, a great application, I used to use it. But the point is, I like to look at opportunities where we can spend to help grow our children. But in all, all reality, it sounds really easy to say, hey, let's just slash all this stuff. Why do we need all these Milwaukee tools? Why do we, why do we need brand-new servers? And ultimately, it's just going to be a lot of really tough decisions to decide what's best for our students moving forward.
Yeah, so I'm not even going to pretend that I know that chart, because I've looked at that, too, and it is crazy on where the funds come from stuff. But everybody that I've talked to that's been on a board, former board, school board, they've all said the same thing. Learn the money, and you'll understand how it works. So I mean, if, yes, if I get elected, that's, that's what I have to do, is I have to figure out these budgets, because there's a lot of things that we need, and I know there's a lot of things that we want. Now, the wants, do we need them? I don't know. That's a, that's an interesting question, and it all depends on what budget it comes from. Is it, is it coming from your tax dollars, or is it? Is it, is it coming from your tax dollars, or is it stuff that the state's just giving to us? I don't know. I mean, the new screens so that we have a new clock. I mean, do, do we need those? I don't know. I don't know what funds those came out of. So it's learning the money, learning the dollars, finding out where it comes from, where it's going, and just ask questions, and repeatedly ask questions.
So, being the current school board member, a lot relies on me right now. Yes, I've studied that chart, and I've gone to the Iowa School Board Association every year and taken a finance class. I've taken the 101 twice. I took the 202 twice. If I am elected again this year, I will take the 300 course. It does take that much time in taking it again to really understand it. So, school finance is not just an easy thing. In general, as far as what we control here locally is actually a small, small percentage. We're looking at our levy, I think our current one, we can max out at like a dollar 34 per thousand, and we're at about a dollar, dollar one, if I remember off the top of my head. That is something that fluctuates very little. So, our real control as a school board of what we have, we don't have a huge say in that. A lot of it comes from state, and so, and that is where every child gets the exact same amount across the school board. In any school, you get the same amount per pupil. And I think that's, that, that levels the playing field for everyone. And as far as you look at those funds, and our biggest one is our general fund, 83%, I'm pretty, it's pretty close to 83, don't quote me on the exact number, goes directly to our teachers. So, I really do say today, we are doing a fine-tooth comb on, on our spending. And I think it's important to continue to do that, because you can't expect funding to always be there, such as S.R. funds. When we had COVID and we got additional funding, it wasn't putting that into staff. It was trying to find different resources that we knew at the end of the day, we would be losing. So, just being smart with our money and making sure that we're aware. And I, I really do think, overall, the school does a great job of that. So, thank you. And the biggest thing, if anyone, you can't mix beans and corn. So that is what I, our first lesson in 101 is you can't mix, so you can't mix from the different pots. So you see all those pots, you can't do that, so.
Okay. As a school board member, the decisions you make are based on current policies. What policies would you like to see reviewed during your term of office? I'm gonna say that, that what, what this question means is what practices would you like to see reviewed? The board reviews policies all year long, goes through the policy handbook. So the board is reviewing policies, official policy, but I'm gonna broaden it out a little bit. What practices of the school would you like to see reviewed or changed?
Well, I picked a great question to be the first person. Gosh. I am not currently on the school board, so I don't, I'll be honest with you, I don't know all of the policies that they review. I don't know all of the practices that they review, and I'm assuming probably a lot of people that are to my right are the same. So I guess, I'm just gonna say that this is one of the things that I've also been preaching when I've been telling people I'm running is, I don't know everything about this, but I'm okay with that, because I'm okay with digging into finding things out and figuring out what I need to help out with. So, I'm gonna sit here and I'm gonna tell you, I do not know what policy I would want to dive into other than looking at all of them and figuring out what we need to do to make sure that our kids get the education that they need, our teachers have the support that they need, and administration has, is approachable and able to talk with our teachers, our families, and our students.
I'm gonna follow up with, I do not know the policies really at all. Now, I can say, though, as being on city council, this is something you, we would have to go through as a group, because there's gonna be policies in there that I don't think are, oh, that's fine, whatever, skip it. But, you know, somebody else is gonna be like, no, that is an issue, and this is why I have that issue with it. That is why we are a board. That is something we should all sit down, and we have to discuss it together, because there's gonna be things I don't care about, or I don't feel are an issue. And there's gonna be other people like, no, that is an issue, and this is why, because somebody said something to me. So, as a board member and being able to work as a group, I think that we are just gonna have to sit there and go through it all together.
Yeah, I, I don't know every policy back-to-back. I have taken the time to go out to the website, and there's a, it starts at, probably starts at, yeah, I thought I was gonna say zero. It goes to like 900, and there's layers in between. I've, I've, I've examined them, but not in, with a fine-tooth comb. Now, that being said, I, as a parent here, I haven't had large, broad-scale concerns with the policies that I've, I've had interaction with. So I think, you know, the, the school board has done a good job in the recent past examining policies, like the cell phone policy, and enacting new, new policies as they see fit, and changing policies as they learn more information. And that's exactly what I would do, too. So it's evaluating what is there at the moment, what the merit of it is, asking questions if you don't understand something, taking the time to listen to, to administration and to other board members, and then making a group, a group decision. It's a, a board of five people for a reason. It's not about what policy I don't like. It's about what policies we all agree are, are good for the school and good for our students.
Yeah, for me, it's ultimately what I'm interested in when it comes to the schools, especially, we're talking elementary and, and middle school, is when it comes down to accountability in the classroom, making sure that the teachers are fully supported and that the teachers know that by support, I mean, I want to be in the building, and I want to be able to talk to you face-to-face, one-on-one, because it does two things. One, it makes, it makes, it, it sets the teacher up so they understand that I have an interest in what they are doing and what their issues are, and, and what kind of changes they would like to see. And the other thing that helps, the reason that benefits us, is because it also helps with retention. A, a teacher, a worker who knows that they're being listened to and knows that somebody cares is somebody who's gonna stick around. And I think that's, that's a big reason for doing that. The other part of it is, has to do with, okay, what can we do as far as getting, I shouldn't say that, should say it that way, but what can we do to maximize the class time so that we're not dealing with a lot of disruptions within the class? So the kids that want to be here, that want to learn, are able to learn. And that the teachers are, are able to spend a lot of time with the students and, and make sure that they are, are getting the maximum time with the kids that want to be there. So, I'm interested in reviewing the policies that have to do with what can we do? I've looked at as far as the laws, you know, the back-and-forth of every, every child's required to have an education, kind of going back and forth on that discussion, but I'm, I'm interested in going more that direction. Kind of going to what you said. I also have seen a lot of good things about cell phone policies and removing cell phones from high schools, and it seems like that works in other districts. So I, I think that'd be super interesting to try here.
Yeah, so, yeah, if you go online, we have a ton of policies, and I have read them. It's been a while now, but I have read them, just because I was trying to find some stuff. They're pretty well just basic policies. But as a board member, it is up to parents and the community. If there's something going on that you don't feel is right with a policy, then we can bring it up as a group and be like, okay, it says this, but it's kind of vague. We need to change this. Let's, let's, let's adjust this. Let's fix the problem. I mean, I'm, we, we gotta work together to change policies. If the policy is not working, we'll work together and fix the issue. There's no way for any one of us to just rewrite the whole policy. There is a lot. So, if there's something that continues to be an issue, then yeah, as a board, we can look at an issue. Like he said, if kids are, are not getting the time with a teacher, I don't, I don't know what we can do. There's, there's laws, there's rules, there's regulations, and there's policies. We can do the part that we can do, and it has to be a group, group effort in fixing the situation.
Echoing some with what everyone has said, a lot of our policies come from the state and what we're mandated on. Iowa School Board Association helps us a lot with writing our policies, because there's a lot of legal matters that go into it. There is some area that we can adjust, and we do adjust accordingly. Sometimes you don't realize a policy is vague until after the fact. And you have to take that policy of what it is at, at that time. Does that mean that maybe it needs to be changed for future? Potentially. But hopefully, we aren't in those vague situations. We do review policies every single meeting. And we are only required to do it every five years. I personally requested that we continue on our every-three-year basis so that we are still getting, anyone who's sitting on the school board has gone through every single policy and has, knows everything. If you try to sit down and do it all in one day, it probably won't happen. You will fall asleep. So, anyways, that, I'll keep it short.
Can you repeat that question for me one more time?
As a school board member, the decisions you make are based on the current policies. What policies would you like to see reviewed during your term of office? And I expanded that to say, policies or practices?
Practices. That's the word I was trying to remember what you said. So, I've talked to several parents, and they were concerned about bullying. And so, they didn't feel like they got, maybe they went all the way up the chain, or they didn't feel like they got justice, or... So I think that's a huge policy that we should review. Safety, I think that's a huge policy that we should review. Kiddos need to feel safe, whether it's physically, emotionally, psychologically, safe. So that, those are big ones. I, too, have looked at the school board, I mean, at the Green County site, and underneath each one, there's a huge amount of policies. So we have a lot of policies to review, so that's encouraging to know that it's kind of a mandate that we have to know those. I think that's super important, and getting detailed about what they actually mean. So, those would be the policies, oh, and consequences and rewards. That would be something else I would review, because I think that kids need to know that there are strong standards. There are consequences for bad behavior, but there are rewards for good behavior. So I don't know what our current policies say about that, so I would love to see what they say and review those.
Thank you. Last Monday, we had fewer candidates and fewer questions. I've still got a dozen questions, but I'm not gonna keep you here so that we get all those answered. If the candidates are able to stick around for a few minutes, if your question wasn't answered, maybe you could ask them. I apologize for it, but it's a, I wasn't able to get it all done tonight. As a reminder, it's now too late to ask the county auditor's office for a mail-in ballot. That deadline's passed, but you can vote early in the east assembly room of the courthouse during business hours. So that's any time between now and two weeks from now, you can do that. Okay, now's the time for you to throw yourselves on the mercy of the group out here. Tell them why you think you should be elected. We'll just start out, Kurt, Spencer.
Well, I would really appreciate your vote. I'm not saying you have to, because that's your choice. And like I said, free will is crazy out there. Now, I am a first responder. I give back to the community 24/7. I'm on call all the time. Been there seven years. I'm a Grand Junction City Council. I am a Green County graduate, and I went on to graduate from DMAC with an Associate's of Applied Science in Wind and Turbine Technology.
All right. I'd first like to thank the Rotary for hosting this event, and Rick for moderating, and all of you for being here tonight. I know you probably had a lot of other things to do for the last 90 minutes, so thanks for coming to engage in this honest conversation. I'm asking for your vote, because I, I don't have an agenda. I make decisions independently, based on facts, and not what a PAC, a party, or social media says my priorities, priority should be. Our kids deserve leaders who think critically, listen carefully, and act with integrity, and I believe I can provide that. I also bring a unique perspective through the many hats that I wear as a CPA, a farmer, a rural resident. I reside outside of Jefferson, and a small business owner, and a parent of three kids that are in this district. These experiences give me the practical and personal understanding of how our decisions will affect families and our community. So, if you want a school member who will show up, do the work, make thoughtful decisions for our schools and for the community, then I would be honored to earn your vote.
Yeah, so I, ultimately, for me, my agenda is to help the kids and help the kids improve so they can become good adults. One of my, my favorite mantras is, don't raise good kids, raise good adults. And that's definitely how I feel about this, and I am running for school board so that I can help raise a lot more good adults in our community that could be successful, that each individual can, can have a great life, where they can feel proud about, about how they are moving through their life. I come in to the, to potentially with the school board with experiences in IT. I've been in IT for 10 years. I'm a software engineer. I've been, I've worked with data, databases. So I have a lot of experience when it comes to the IT, when we talk, when we talk about servers. I understand what the server talk is, mainly because I've been around that for a while. Again, I also work with a lot of people when it comes to career consultations. So I, I help a lot of people already, and, and that's what I do, and that's what I like to do. And that's what I plan on doing on the school board.
Yeah, so I put dedication into everything I do. Being a farmer, like, when I leave here, I'm going back out to the combine, because I still got trucks to load. So, everything I do, whether it's on the fire department, farming, anywhere that I've served, I've, I've been here when we had Rams program, responsible adults mentoring students. It was a program that we could come in and read to the elementary kids. I've coached, T-ball, actively involved in the community. I've said it from day one, when I, when I decided to run for school board, our school has to look bad before it can get better. Once we accept the problem that's going on in the school, then we can move on, and we can fix it. And let's raise Green County back up to the standard where it was when a lot of us went to school here. I hear from so many friends, and their kids are just being left behind. You know, behavior issues, and nobody wants to admit to behavior issues. We have them. They're bad. They will pull 24 kids out of the classroom with the teacher and stand in the hallway while they're waiting 20 minutes to address one child that's flipping desks in, in the classroom. That is why our children are getting left behind. Our children are not learning if they're not in the classroom. We have to address these situations. We have to address behaviors, bullying. I have friends, they pulled their daughter in their homeschooling because of bullying. They went up the ladder, and nothing got done. Well, actually, I have another group of friends. They have just pulled their kids out here recently because of behaviors and bullying. We gotta accept the problem, and we've gotta fix the problem. Once we can get these things under control, we can get Green County back to the good old days and back to the way things are supposed to be. So, if you vote for me, I appreciate it. If you don't vote for me, there's no hard feelings. I'm here for you guys. I'm here for your children, your grandchildren. I'm here for the community. I want to serve. I have a passion for it. Like I said, my grandma Grace was a teacher. My mom was an associate. My wife's an associate. My father-in-law, Steve Solomon, he was a math teacher, retired now. Cut teaching in the family. It's our passion. I'm here. I'm wanting to serve. It's what I like to do. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate everybody.
Thank you all for your time for allowing us to speak here tonight. I think it's been very beneficial. I, why you should vote for me is that I totally believe in our public schools. I sent our children here. I believe in what they have to offer. Over the last four years, I have seen the growth in our schools. There has been some change in culture. I would say especially in our middle school and elementary school, or high school, or elementary school. I think we still have areas to work on as far as behaviors go. We have implemented a behavior specialist and trying different routes, so I, I do think there's growth opportunities there. I have a passion for education. Being now an instructor myself, seeing the other side of it, I have another appreciation for it. And I believe that I am the right person to continue to move us forward. I think we've grown so far, and I would really like to see even more growth. I think we've grown so far and I would really like to see even more growth. And even when I've been sitting here tonight, I've been constantly taking notes because I actually want to hear from all of us of what do we need to improve on? What am I not hearing? One thing you're going to probably know about me real quickly, I'm not on Facebook. I don't want to be on Facebook. I don't feel like social media really is what is happening. I think it's the extreme ends that are happening on social media. So that's just not me. So if you want to vote for me, come talk to me. If you have questions about any of my beliefs, please challenge me to try to make me a better person. Thank you. And get out and vote.
Thank you guys so much for being here. I'm excited to have gotten to speak and share my views and maybe introduce you guys to some new things. So the reason I think that you guys should vote for me is because I bring a significant amount of diversity and experiences from my 43 years of being on planet Earth, from raising three children, from public school, private school, homeschool, co-ops, college teaching. I, I have a diverse, and then you go to the healthcare side. So between education and healthcare, I bring, with me, I have a passion for teachers and I have a passion for bringing what teachers do to other teachers. I got to talk to a gal at the last forum and she had worked 13 years, I hope this is okay to say and it doesn't like give her away, but she, she's my hero. She worked 13 years in an inner-city school in a, I won't say the city, a large city in Texas. 13 years in an inner-city school in Texas. Job you'll ever have on planet Earth. She's a wealth of resources to our school district. Letting her and women like her, men like her too, you know, I mean, you know, women and men who are teachers, teach one another. Do, I would love to see that. So somebody mentioned about bringing, opening a door between us and the teachers. I'm kind of all about that. I'm related. I want to see what our teachers need, what are, what are they feeling in the classroom? We can't change things if we don't know what's going on. So I think that that's kind of what I bring, that relationship, that desire, that true care. And I think that's what a lot of healthcare providers do bring, is a heart that really says, I care about you. I care about your kids. I care about what's happening to them. And I would say the last reason that makes me a standout candidate is my servant leadership. I think any public position I have, public school amongst, since our community, we are public servants to our community. We, it's a privilege to us and for me, that's what I think we should be portraying to our parents, to our teachers. I want to lead in a way that shows them, I'm here to serve you. What can I do to help? How can we make this better? So I have a strong sense of just servant leadership and I think I bring that. So if you're interested in those things, vote for me.
First off, I wanted to thank everyone for coming tonight and showing up. Like I said earlier, public speaking is not in my comfort zone. So being here, I want people to realize I'm okay coming out of my comfort zone if that means our school's going to be better. You can find me a lot with our youth. I coach youth basketball. I teach at our dance studio here in town. Just about any youth program between my husband and I, we have touched it in one way or another. Sometimes it's teams that don't even have our own kids on it because that way the kids got to play. Long before I decided to run for school board, I saw the importance of putting that time back into our youth. The youth is our future and if we invest in them, that is how our community as a whole continues to grow. And I've talked about how I don't have an agenda. I don't see drastic changes that need to be made, but I do acknowledge there are changes. There's things that are not going well in the school and that's with anything. There's always going to be change. There's always going to be growth. Healthcare is so similar to education when it comes to that. And I think that my background in healthcare can help me, help people understand that. Healthcare is always changing and pivoting, just like how we teach now is not how we taught 10 years ago even. So I think that my background of healthcare can help with that. And then I also just want Green County to be somewhere where parents want to send their kids. We've talked about people being pulled out. We've talked about people homeschooling. Let's figure out how we get kids that, or parents want to bring their kids back to here. Teachers want to teach, students want to enjoy coming here. Like I said, kids are our future and giving them the best opportunity to learn is how we're going to grow to a successful community. And I hope that you guys can come out and I hope I have your vote, but just like others have said, just exercise that right to vote. It's so important.
It's a good evening. Thank you. I want to thank, on behalf of Rotary, I want to thank Jackie Andrew for being our hunter-gatherer on the, on the questions. Sean Seaborn for videoing it for us, the school staff for setting up for us. Want to thank the candidates. It's not easy to do what you folks just did. And we owe you a debt of gratitude and I want to thank all of you for coming tonight. We'll be a better, a better community and a better school if everyone gets out to vote. So thanks, stay warm.